All right, at 6:30 we'll call the meeting to order if we could start with the Pledge of Allegiance, please. All right, any changes or additions to the agenda tonight?
I am proposing to remove my check-in review just because we don't have everybody. But, just because I would like to get feedback from everybody on the council, I'd propose pushing it back one more meeting and then if we run into this issue again next meeting, for whatever reason, we'll just do it regardless.
All right, I'll look for a motion to approve the agenda as presented or to approve the agenda with removal of 11, the administrative check-in review.
I'll make the motion to approve the agenda with the removal of number 11.
Okay, do we have a second? Any further discussion? And I tend to agree with you, Maggie, on this. I mean, obviously our goal, we need to keep moving forward and, but this isn't necessarily holding up city business. This is more for you. I think it is important that you get feedback, so I think that's a good idea. And with that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries three zero. Public comments, if anyone would like to talk about or discuss anything that is not on the agenda, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll close public comments and move to the consent agenda. Is there anything on the consent agenda that needs to be pulled for further comments or any questions? My only question, Maggie, is on 5C, the DU gambling license approval. Are we, I assume this is going to be happening fairly soon, are we set in the community center now? Have we opened that up and we have the proper?
Yeah, so we're-
Amount of people and what can happen?
So we're following the state guidelines for reopening. We do have a, kind of like a secondary contract that they need to sign that kind of states the risks and the things that they need to do in order to be in compliance, maintaining social distancing and staying at 50% capacity for use of the building.
And the state's and CDC's recommendations are 50% right now for these kind of venues?
I believe so, yeah.
Yep. They are. Perfect, that's good, good news. All right, that's all I had. Anything else? I'll look for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries three zero. All right, Megan, let's just jump right into 6A, One Capital Improvement Plan Fire Station.
Okay. Let me just get to it. Okay, so, City and Mayor has been working on plans for the new fire station for a while. As part of that, we continue to work on the feasibility of the project and the planning process, but with that, we have to identify how we're going to finance it. At a previous council meeting, the council did decide to move forward with the financing path that would allow the city to issue bonds under the capital improvement plan without the usual referendum requirement. So, under this method, the city has to draft a capital improvement plan, which I've been, I have drafted with the help of Todd Hagan with LRS, our financial advisor. So that's in your packet. It's designed to anticipate our capital improvement expenditures over a five-year period or more, so that we can purchase, make purchases in an efficient and cost-effective method. So, once the CIP is completed, which it is currently, we have to hold a public hearing and a notice of the public hearing has to be published in the paper, no more than 30 days out and not less than seven days before the hearing. And then, after the public hearing, the council may approve the CIP immediately or based on comments from the public and change it and approve it at a later meeting. So, in our case, with our CIP, we're calling for, to fund this project with general obligation bonds, so there's another set of procedures that we have to follow in order to, to issue those types of bonds. So, the council must hold another public hearing, which we're asking to hold both public hearings on the same day. So, we would do the CIP and the bonds on the same day and that just allows us to kind of put both together, get comments on both, and the city council will then make a vote, has to be approved by three-fifths of a vote. And then with that, we then have a waiting period of 30 days in which that bond decision is subject to reverse referendum. So, if a petition is signed by voters equal to at least 5% of the votes cast in the city in the last general election and is filed with the city clerk within 30 days after the public hearing, the bonds may not be issued unless approved by the voters. So, and then after that 30-day waiting period, whatever happens, we will then, we would then, one, if we did have a reverse referendum and that would have to go on a ballot at some point, if it does pass that point where we don't get a reverse referendum petition, then we would work with our financial advisor to prepare for a bond sale and repayment schedule. So, a little bit more on the details, so with that, on the debt service limit, so the maximum debt service in any year that we can issue is .16% of the estimated market value of the total City of Mayor. So, and that's the, I can, I'll go into that in a second, but, oh, actually, I'll do it right now. It is, so the estimated market value of Mayor is currently 193,996,400. And so with that, I'm trying to explain this clearly, we cannot, hold on, I'm going to reverse that. Okay, so I'm going to go into the current cost of the project first. So, the estimated project cost is currently around $4 million and the bond that we're asking for would not exceed 4.250, or $4,250,000. And so those would, those would be paid for through our taxes, but then there's statutes that I was kind of getting into that we have to follow. So, municipalities cannot incur debt in excess of 3% of the market value. And so, 3% of our market value, that 193,996,400 is about $5,819.892. So, we currently have 205,000 that's subject to the debt limit already and so with this project adding, getting added on, it would be within the statutory limit. I'll go into the streets project next, but with that, we would be under, so we would be able to issue the debt for this project. The second is that our annual debt for this project cannot be more than .16% of the estimated market value, which is 310,094. And so, that's kind of our debt payment that we can't exceed and with the debts, the projected payment that we would owe, it would be about 283,542. So, we would meet that statute as well for this project. And then, page 36 is the schedule of the process. I don't know if you have, I'll go to that quick. So, that just kind of highlights the timeline of how this would all go down. So, the public hearing would be for the bonds and the capital improvement plan would be August 10th. September 9th would be when the reverse referendum period ends and then, depending on what happens, we would just move forward from there and, and plan accordingly. So, with that, I'm sorry, that was a lot of information. I'm here to take questions on, on this at this time. This is just kind of the process to get, that we need to take to, to, when we decided to go with the capital improvement plan, this is the process that it takes to get going on that type of plan without a reverse referendum, but then with the ability to go this way, that a reverse referendum could be filed.
So, has the committee met since the last council meeting to discuss what our station is going to cost? Are we just assuming it is that for, is it about 4,000, 44 million?
Well, the last I, the last, I mean, we did hold a public, an open house on the matter. We, the last I talked with the architect is that he talked with a contractor who was actually like doing bidding, the bidding process for these types of projects. And if we do follow the schedule or we put the bids out in November, December, they're actually, I guess, coming in at 2008, 2009 levels, like where it's like the best, it's actually would be significantly lower because of what's happening with COVID.
We talked about, one of the council members concerned about, you know, a fitness center, was that discussed? Were we doing a fitness center in that building? What's changed in the price since the last time we-
Nothing has changed. So, we still have to go through, I mean, we still have to go through the process of, like, taking stuff down, taking stuff out. We will still have that discussion. This just allows us to go to that maximum amount currently.
Wouldn't it have been prudent to come with some sort of estimate of what the, what they expect the price to be tonight? Instead of just saying that we all, I think we all probably, everyone understands that that number wasn't palatable the other night, right?
Right.
And we're hearing and looking at this number and there's been no changes and we're discussions of changes, it's just, we're just, we're just going to start running with that number.
I mean, I think right now, it's, I would say it's, we're kind of going with a number that we have and we're planning, I think it'd be better to, to plan it high and, and cut it down on, like, to, to get through this process, to plan high, to, and then take it down, because we can always lower, but we can't increase.
The other discussion that we had at the last meeting was the way that communication wasn't flowing. Has the communication changed since the last meeting?
I have met with the, the fire department, yes, and we did talk about-
What have they done? Have you done any more research as to what you need or don't need?
We have, we've talked and asked to, you know, we're just to set up a meeting with-
Can you come up to the-
We've talked and asked about, you know, setting up a meeting with Cory and, you know, the, more or less a, a building committee, which we have not met yet, but have talked about-
The consensus was to kind of wait until after our open houses last, ended last week so that we could get additional comments from the public on, on what their thought-
What were those comments?
We did not, we received a few comments on the first day because we received, I think we had three people come in. The second time, we didn't have any people come in. They were actually pretty positive comments. Andy, I don't, I know you were at the end of-
I talked to a few of the members that came the first night. Those that did definitely saw the need for the station and those that, you know, or that they, that, or when they looked at the tax kind of impact, they were surprised. They, they thought it was going to be a lot higher and were surprised by the, the number, so they were pleased with it.
I was down there for that one and that was, that's a good summary of it. Pretty positive. Any other questions?
I mean, I think a true number, we're not going to know until the actual bidding, until you get your bids back. I mean, all the numbers are purely a speculation on, on the architect's best judgment from what he has seen, you know, that's the stuff go for, but you won't see a, a true number until it goes out for bids, because you don't know how, how hungry some of these companies are for work or stuff like that.
I understand that, but also there was, there's also feedback giving that this budget needs to be cut, that that number is not palatable. And we're still here tonight with the same number and nothing else being done. It seems like we should, we should have been out there saying, hey, let's look at what we need, evaluate what we need in this, in this station. If you could have got this number down, I thought, you know, it sure, sure would have been a lot easier, but for just, for this number, just to come back with the way it is right now, no changes to what was, what was given after the, after the, or the input you had from the council, it's just not acceptable.
The, the input that I, the way I received it was not so much is what the number was, it's how we got from this point to this point. That's the way I understood it.
Okay.
Not so much that it was, oh, we can't, you know, spend this much money or whatever.
I believe there were, my, my interpretation for what one of the council members said is that, at that, at that money, at that amount of money, it's a no deal, I think was the quote.
Okay.
So, that's, I think we probably need to, to look at that.
Well, and I agree, I think we do need to look at it. A lot of things, unfortunately, again, we mentioned at the last meeting, was due to lack of communication.
Well, it doesn't sound like it's been fixed.
A lot of things were added, like, and changed my understanding, things that can't necessarily be taken out. And so, we have, I have reviewed it with the fire department. And so, yes, the building committee does need to meet, we do need to see what things we can downsize on, but certain changes had to be made. There, there was, again, I agree, miscommunication between several parties and so we, we got to a point where things were added that, I guess, were needed after the fact, that should have been in there to begin with, but I think, I don't think that that number's going to go significantly lower than what this is.
That should be information that we should have when we start talking about this again, because you're going to start, you're going to continue to slow the process. Thank you.
Any other comments? Maggie, to be clear, can you just, just so I make sure I understand, an eight, 10, the three-fifths vote?
Yeah.
Does that, is that, we need five people here or can it be four people, but it's unanimous, four to four, four, four passes? Does that-
This is, yeah, this will be the, this will be the, on the night of the meeting. Yeah, it has to be by a certain percentage.
Is it a percentage? A three-fifths?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. It's not three of five people?
I believe it's a percentage, because you might not have a quorum at that meeting.
That's what I'm asking.
Right.
Just wanted to be clear on that. And, you know, to echo some of what Eric's saying, I mean, I agree with that, I think I, we talked about that last time, but as far as this and going out for the, I'm okay with this number for, for what this is for tonight, but again, yeah, I think we still need to, you know, we'll still talk about the number of the fire station and where that lands, but having this number, we are getting close to our max. I mean, if the bids come in at 5 million, we're, it's not going to hap, I mean, statutory, it can't happen, it sounds like I haven't done the math, but, you know, for, for what this is, I'm, I'm okay going out with this. I think the only downfall is, we post it, people may see it not like that number and then they could choose to do, you know, start a petition based on, based on this number. So, a little lower would be more palatable, but I think that's really the only downfall, really. So, I don't have any other comments, questions. Liz, any comments, questions on clarification you need on this?
No, again, I, my thoughts and beliefs echo what you both are saying, so.
Okay, with that, I'll look for a motion to approve Resolution 7-13-20-22, resolution calling for public hearing on the intention issue of GO bond and the proposal to adopt the capital improvement plan.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion, do we have a second? I'll second it. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign?
Aye.
Motion passes two to one. Correct? All right, that will take us to 6A2, Street Reconstruction Plan.
All right, so I'll just go over this one a little bit more quickly. It's very similar to the CIP plan, but it's instead called the Street Reconstruction Plan. So, as you know, a little bit of history, in 2018, the city council adopted a pavement management plan that plans for the street reconstruction and maintenance over the next 10-plus years. So, in 2020, the city will be doing its first phase of the plan and will pay for it with cash under the Street Improvement Fund. As part of the future planning process, we need to be able to figure out how to finance the remaining project. And so, under state law, the city is allowed to bond for street projects upon creating a street reconstruction plan. This document is designed to anticipate street reconstruction and overlay expenditures over a five-year period. It is a document that does get updated over time. Obviously, our plan is, our pavement management plan is 10-plus years, but this plan is only five. So, once the SR, the Street Reconstruction Plan draft is completed, which is in your document, I, again, worked on that with Todd Hagan with LRS, the city council has to hold a public hearing on the plan and notice it in the newspaper of its intent to hold that public hearing. So, like the CIP, if it calls, calls for general obligation bonds, which it will, the city must allow for an additional set of procedures and another public hearing will have to be held for the issuance of the bond, so we would, again, do those both together. And the council must approve the street reconstruction project bonds by a two-third vote in this case. However, the bonds are also subject to a reverse referendum, so again, if the petition is signed by voters equal to at least 5% of the votes cast in the last general election and is filed with this city clerk within 30 days after the public hearing, the bonds may not be issued unless approved by voters. So, in financing the street reconstruction project, only one statute applies and in this case, it's that you cannot incur ex, debt in excess of 3% of the market value. So, this is where things get a little complicated with the fire station project, because the amount of debt that we cannot exceed is $5,819,892. So, with that, we, me and the financial advisor, we are proposing to move forward with this plan, just in case, we, because we want to be able to at least finance some of it through this project, depending on if, on what the fire station project comes in at. So, because we, we may not be able to finance all of this, all of these projects over the years with the SRP, we would have to use a different method under state law that allows for the issuance of tax abatement bonds. So, if the city were to later plan for, to issue tax abatement bonds, the city would have to hold another public hearing and make the findings that, the following four findings, that the council expects the benefits to the city of the abatement to at least equal or exceed the costs of the city, to the city thereof. Also, granting the abatement is in the public interest because it would provide financing necessary to prevent further deterioration of streets. The property will be loc, not, will not be located in a tax increment financing district. We do not have any of those for the period of time that the abatement is in effect. And in any year, the total amount of property taxes abated by the city by this and other abatement resolutions, if any, does not exceed 10% of the net capacity of, of the city for the taxes payable. So, with that, this plan is just a, a plan that we want to have in place just in case. I mean, for part of the financing, we're going to have to see where the fire station comes in at, if that project moves forward, and then we would use this plan and then likely in the future, we would, we would be able to use tax abatement as well to finance the remaining portion. So, this plan is just kind of, we want to have this in place, you know, in any ca, you know, just for any scenario that happens. If the fire station doesn't go through, then we'd be able to finance the whole project with the SRP. So, with that, I'm, I'm going to take-
Does this cover the entire Bolton-Mink Street Reconstruction Plan that they created, correct?
This will, this will, here, let me show you. Yes, so, the first five years are in this plan and we would have to keep re, we would have to keep revising the plan over time, but yes, we do have, I don't think it's included in here, but we do have the issue, the bonds that we would issue in 2020, that schedule, we have 2022 and we have 2024 is what we would be bonding for to cover, I believe, I will have to double-check, but I believe that's the first, but I, like, the, we aren't going to spend all the money in the first five years, or all this money in the first five years, it's going to go towards additional projects in the future as well. So, we're just staggering it so that we can have a more palatable debt schedule coming up, because we have to, we do have some debt falling off in the near future that we have to kind of wrap, wrap our payments around. So, we're essentially staggering this so that we can replace old debt with new debt.
So, if you go back to the screen that listed the 2021 project, the 2022 project, that slide you just showed?
This one?
Yeah. It's the 2021 year, that mill and overlay, that's the one we're doing this year, correct? Or is that, that's, so the one for this year is not even on here?
No, it's not.
So, those are actual numbers, not numbers we had on the plan?
These are numbers, yes.
True numbers now?
These are true numbers based on the, on what we are planning on doing. Those can also, I mean, we can always-
So, we're covered for the one this year?
Yes, yep.
That pick, we're paying cash for that?
Yep.
So, I guess my question is, is there, is there a need to do this now? What's the need to do this, to do this resolution for this block, and why not wait until we see what happens? If we won't even need anything until 2021 on that $290,000 mill and overlay, is, or do you need it for planning? What, why does this, why now?
We, we could wait. I, I was, I was just, me and the financial advisor, just for planning purposes, decided to do it this way, but I believe there is some flexibility.
I just want to make sure we're on that fine line of where we can be and can't be and that's what I was wondering.
Yeah, we, I mean, we would have to go through this process eventually.
For planning purposes?
Yep.
And it's just going, doing the public hearing, getting the approval, not necessarily we'll even do it or not do it?
Yeah, I mean, if we're, the, the one thing is that, is that if we are planning to do the project in the spring, we would have to get, we would have to start getting the planning with the engineer planned so that we can get the specs and then-
That makes sense to me.
My understanding was, one of the reasons that we had the street project plan created with Bolton-Mink was so that we could budget this in our budget every single year without having to do any kind of bonds. So, when this came up, I'm kind of like, well, wait a minute, I thought we had this budgeted every year, we have, we're putting a certain amount in the budget for our street.
We have a certain amount going in each year, but we do, we've never had the ability to be able to fund it all entirely through that.
Which is why we have a street maintenance plan-
Right.
To do a little bit at a time, so we're not doing the whole city at once.
Right.
Because we can, we can afford to do a little this year, a little the next year, a little the next year. So, this, I guess, surprised me and caught me off-guard that we're even considering this when we have it in our budget.
Maybe we need to go back to a work session and realign on that, because that was not, that was never my understa, my understanding was, when we saw the numbers from Bolton and Mink for the entire 10-year project, I don't remember what it was, 5 million, I, my understanding was, we knew we'd have to bond for it, and our $100,000 a year that we're putting aside would no way fund, I mean, it'd take three years just to fund 2021. So, that was my understanding, but if we need to go back to a work session and discuss it, I'm, and make sure we're aligned on that, because it's a big piece. I think that's a big piece we all have to be aligned on.
I think it's a good idea and we can just let the fire station start to play itself out as well.
Okay. Yeah, we do have some flexibility with this, this project.
Why don't we, I, I would propose we table this for now, talk at a work session, just to quick make sure we're aligned again on this. Get anything that any council members may have. And then, if we have to, we can, as soon as, you know, the next meeting at one work, but two meetings from now, we can bring it back and, and do this if, if so, if so needed for your planning purposes and those things. I'm, I'm okay with that.
Make a motion that we table it till also meeting.
Okay. We have a motion to table. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries three zero. All right. So, you're good with that, Maggie? You have direction on?
Yep.
Well, this, I, I just want to make sure we're aligned and not-
No, that makes sense.
Those are pretty conflicting thoughts on what we thought was happening and with this bigger project. All right, let's go to 6A3, the text amendment.
Okay. I'm just going to go over a staff report from city planner John Anderson. So, the city of mayor initiated a review of language related to permitted uses in the commercial industrial district. So, we are looking at amending that section of the code, the commercial industrial district, letter B section, and I will bring that up. And that's under permitted uses. So, the city of mayor owns multiple parcels of land on, in the Shimkor Commercial Industrial Park. And they are zoned, commercial, zoned within the commercial industrial district. But, and that we do have a public works building there. We do also have our water tower. We have another vacant property that's being proposed for the fire station. The issue that we're having is that the, these government buildings are not allowed in the commercial industrial district. And so, we do need to update the code to allow these to be permitted uses. So, since staff was discussing possibly moving, or since the council has been discussing the plan to possibly move forward with the fire station, this was brought to the planning commission for a public hearing for a text amendment that would allow for government buildings in the commercial industrial district. So, I'm just going to show you, just on page 60 is a list of the permitted uses. It gives you an idea of what's currently allowed, permitted accessory uses and conditional uses. And as you can see, that government buildings are not in either of the, any of these. So, it is, it is proposed that it would, that government buildings and structures would be in addition to, under letter B, under permitted uses in section 152.060. So, the planning commission did review this at their July 7, 2020 meeting, and they voted 5-0, recommended approval of the text amendment. So, this is what the new-
What's the driver for this?
It's, one of the drivers is that we currently have a public works building and a water tower that are in there that are public buildings. But then also, the fire station is a government building that is currently would not be allowed under our current code.
For motion to approve ordinance 230, allowing government buildings in the commercial industrial district.
Make that motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
One second.
We have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries three zero.
Okay.
Is there anything in, that we, we need to update in any of our other processes, procedures, code that would capture this? I mean, we, we built that water tower quite a while ago. We did the public, and it was, it's been missed now twice.
Right.
And I caught now on this third one. You know, is there anything else we need to update or do to make sure future or?
Um, I have talked-
Do it.
Well, this would be okay for this, for, for now, for this, this section of the code. I do have the city planner reviewing the rest of the code as he, as he has time to, to find any more inconsistencies that we do need to update.
Thank you. 6B1, fire department tanker.
Okay. So, at the previous council meeting, we did talk about the purchase of a new tanker for the fire department. The current 1989 international tanker is about, is a little over 30 years old and is requiring ongoing maintenance and repair. And the latest is that the, when going in for repair, it was more than, the issues were more than expected. So, the fire department is proposing a 2021 Freightliner tanker that would hold 3,000 gallons. The department uses the tankers for rural fires and, rural properties do not have a water system with fire hydrants. And the city always maintains two tankers in case of rural, rural emergencies. So, the current quote for the new tanker is $263,479. The fire advisory board that consists of representatives from the city and the townships met on June 15 to discuss the need for the new tanker and how to finance it. And historically, equipment has been paid for on a per parcel basis, which you can see up there, the percentage, the latest for 2020 percentages. So, staff put together the following scenarios to break, because we, we did have a discussion that the fire department would pay part of it out of their capital and, their capital fund. The capital fund has about $250,000 in there currently with another 100 going in there this year. So, it, it's just kind of gives you a visual of if, if capital paid 100, 125, or 150,000, then what would, what would the city owe and the townships owe? At the last meeting, the council asked what the city, to look into a loan. I did go to Core Trust Bank, to a local bank, to see what a loan would entail for the city, for our, the city portion, not the capital. So, the rate would be 3.38% fixed. And then, if, if it was at 100, that's the top amount. If it was at 125 capital, if, if the fire department contributed 100, that would be the top one. If they contributed 125, it would be the, the middle. And then, if they contributed 150, those would be the rates that we're looking at. So, I guess, right now, I'm looking for just a discussion on purchasing the trunk, the, the tanker, but then also, how are we going to finance that portion of the project or the purchase?
How many miles are on that truck? My thoughts are, I think we should spend at least 125,000. I'm most comfortable with 125,000 cash. Between the five and 10-year that you have, the, on these scenarios, I, I, you know, from not having every budget in front of us and knowing where we're sitting on it, I'd look for more, what you would recommend more on that. When we think next apparatus is coming up, does that put, are we starting to overlap on it if we went 10 years, when's the next, you know, those sorts of things?
Right. So, the next, next one would be 15 years, right?
And I'm just the, I don't mean-
The next tanker, okay.
I mean, just the next apparatus, the next piece, you know?
Major equipment.
If in five years, we're coming back, then I'd just soon get this one done in five before the next, you know?
Right. I would, if it were, my recommendation, if you did go with the 125 capital, would be to do the five-year.
About the 22,000 here.
Yes.
Yeah, that's my thoughts on it. I'd like to go in the middle. I think it's a good balance, putting 125,000 in. You know, we go lower, we're hitting residents again with more money that they've already put money in. So, now we're kind of using what they've already, what we've already kind of captured from people. So, I, I think it's a good balance. Do you need a motion today? Are you just, do you-
Um, I, I-
I mean, we have five or six different scenarios, so I, I'm not sure what exactly you need today, or if you're looking for discussion and then a motion, I, you know?
Yeah, I guess the, at the last meeting, it was, how are we going to finance it? And so, I wanted to bring that back to you. And with that, I needed to, I guess I would be looking for a decision on how, like what you're most comfortable with. I would say that the, um-
Yeah, it almost should have been on a work session to identify, now that we had more information, to identify it and then bring it to council to try to make one. We have six different scenarios. We could have six different motions that don't, if we're not in agreement. But, we can, we can, if someone wants to make a motion, they certainly can. I'll make a motion to fund, well, first, let me, before I do that, are we still set on that? Is that, have they confirmed that quote, that they'll honor that, that $263,479? Is there any other monies that will be needed that we're not, that aren't captured? Are you going to need logos? Are you going to need lights? Or, I, I mean, what else is, there'll be not another dollar in? Okay. Just fill it up with some gas and then, okay. Okay.
It's a tanker after all, so we need the water.
Makes sense. But, I just want to make sure there weren't going to be any other charges that came. So, this will be logo, everything we need on it. I'll make a motion to fund the tanker, using $125,000 from the capital fund at a five-year payment plan. Do we have a second?
One second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign?
Yes, no?
Motion carries two one. Thank you. 6C1, skate park equipment.
So, skate park equipment, the public works firm, I recently, within the last few months, had to remove the quarter pipe skate park equipment at Meadow Park due to safety concerns. So, over the last month or two, the park commission has been discussing replacing that equipment and making some upgrades to the skate park from now, but then also into the future. The park commission's looking at various phases based on affordability and, and what they can afford now and then in the next coming years. Phase one would include purchasing and the installation of two quarter pipes, a quote picnic table, and a grind box. And at the June 9, 2020 meeting, the park commission moved to recommend to council the purchasing of the equipment not to exceed 25,000. The quote did come in at $17,476.25 with installation being done by the city. And the cost of the equipment, just because they didn't budget for this item, would come out of their capital fund, which currently has a balance of about 350,000. So, it wasn't, they, they didn't plan for this because they didn't foresee like, to have to replace some significant in, equipment. But with that, they were able to get a, a better quote price if they spent a little bit more money. So, they're recommending to council approving that $17,476.25 for those four pieces.
I guess my question, first of all, is, I know the grind bar that they used to have, someone took that. So, how are we going to secure the grind box, the picnic table, to make sure that no one goes off with those?
Yeah, I can talk to public works about that.
So, well, okay.
Just removed, but-
Well, I know in the wintertime, some of the kids were, had removed it to a hill to skateboard. And I asked them, please put it back. And they did. But then, the following winter, it disappeared and it's never come back. So, I don't know if it's the same kids, different kids, or whatever. So, but, you know, I know it's hard to move the other pieces. But, yeah, the grind box, I mean, that's just plywood and somebody can just up and walk. I just want to make sure it's, if we're going to spend the money, that it's grounded in. So- Yeah.
Okay.
To secure it and be able to move it too, as they restructure, you know, as, as things-
Well, yeah.
Change around. But, I was a little confused by all the diagrams and all the, I wasn't quite sure of what their full plan was, which one they wanted, everything to look like. I was a little confused by all that, but-
This was, yeah, this was their original. But, we actually received a, and it's going to go back to the park board tomorrow, a very scaled back version of all this. So, this is what was presented to the park commission originally. They did discuss scaling it back a little bit, or quite a bit, to make it a little bit more feasible. So, this is, this was the original concept plan. But, and this is what we'd be purchasing, which is in the red. And then, a future phase would be a lot less than, than what's out there.
Any other questions? I'll look for a motion to purchase two quarter pipes, a picnic table, and a grind box for $17,476.25.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
One second.
We have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? So, like I said, why not, as they start meeting, I would kind of like to see their overall plan, you know, and start doing some of these things. And then, kind of how many phases these are. I mean, I, if, if it's a five-year plan, by the time we get done with five, is other stuff can also be bad and the, you know, I don't want to take out too many years on some of that too. So, hopefully, they can kind of dial it in a little bit and kind of get an idea of what they want to look like, how big the pad. I'm certain they're going to have to expand the pad eventually.
Right. Yep, they're going to be reviewing that tomorrow, like their long-term plan tomorrow.
But, no, I'm, I think it's great to replace what we need to. I, I know that skate park gets used a lot. I drive by the water town one almost every day on my way to work. That gets used all the time. So, I think it's great. Okay. Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries three zero. City council reports, Eric, anything to report on? Nothing? Liz?
No, I don't.
I'm just going to make one more comment in the reports. I don't have a report. I have the oppor, I meant to say something about the tanker. And I just saw, use this opportunity right now, just going forward. I do think we have to, I'm going to continue to be pushing on this stuff and the sharing with other communities and what all needs to be done. And I know I've talked with chief one and chief two about it numerous times. But I do think we need to start looking at this apparatus differently and sharing differently. So, it'll be my certainly goal and intentions in the next couple of years to really try to come up with some solutions on that that could help benefit. And I, I was in favor of this, doing this mainly from discussing with the townships. The townships were really pushing and wanted us to have two of them. So, just support the fire district, I think was needed. So, I, I apologize for getting out of the line, turn here, but I just overlooked my notes. All right, any, any other comments? Then I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? We have a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned. All right. We'll jump right into the work session. Then, Maggie, any changes to the agenda, anything?
Uh, no changes.
Okay.
So, page two, I just wanted to give you the tentative budget schedule again. I know it's kind of difficult to do with just three council members, but I just wanted tonight, you know, for the remainder of this year. But then, as we start to look at the budget for 2021, what are our goals that we want to accomplish? I know it's a little difficult because right now, I don't have LGA numbers. I don't have fiscal disparities numbers. I just don't have those numbers yet. And I don't know if, if it's going to change because of COVID or not. So, it's kind of difficult for us to kind of project where, where we think, like our tax rate will be. Just running preliminary numbers with- Um, just running preliminary numbers uh, with, just going off his, historical, without COVID, we're looking good. But again, I don't have final numbers, so I just, I can't even. Um, I, I would say like we would be where we're current, around where we're currently at.
Be aware of any COVID-related losses that, that we may have or shortfalls?
Well, I was gonna bring that up too at the next meeting, cause I'm, I'm, well, and I think this is a good time to bring it up too, because that we are receiving CARES Act money in the amount of about a hundred seventy-five thousand. So that can cover um, certain areas that we've had to kind of jump in and make some changes. So we've had additional cleaning services, we've had to purchase additional supplies. We've, especially for elections coming up, we've have, we, we do have to make some purchases and some changes. Um, it's not like a huge number for us, but there's also some programs that I'm looking into that I just didn't have the numbers on yet um, that can help businesses and residents. So if we want to, we can take, we can, the city can vote to transfer some of that. I mean, we can do it ourselves, but I'm recommending that the county do it because they have a system in place where we would donate that money and they would administer grants to businesses and residents. So that money would then, would stay within our community, but it would help our businesses and residents. So I think that's where I'm thinking, I will recommend, yes, at the next work session, where I will recommend that money to go, since we haven't had a great deal of expenditures here at this, like.
It'd have some revenue losses with the community center, with the community.
Yes, like revenue losses and stuff like that.
But I, I think these numbers should, everything should be covered on that.
Yeah, so I, I, I think we can make an argument, yeah, for revenue losses for our community center, some additional cleaning and purchases that we've had to make. But um, I think.
Potential of, you know, loss or reduction of LGA is probably gonna, most likely hit us in the law enforcement.
Well, the hard thing is, is that we have to use the money by November. It can't, I don't believe it can go towards next year. That's the problem that we're having. But I, I'm hoping that those numbers will come out soon, cause I know everybody's in the same situation where they need to start planning and getting more of their numbers together for next year. Um, I'm assuming, you know, some of the assumptions I'm making is that, as a council, you would want to see the tax rate be the same or lower, and or lower, I'm assuming lower. Um.
Always be great, yeah.
If we can, I.
As low as we can.
Right, exactly.
Um, now I understand if it, you know, for, if it goes up eight percent, yeah, I'll have some, you know, but, you know, a little fluctuation there, I, I think we can work with, but I think that's the goal. On the CIP plan, where we had kind of the projected ta, uh, tax rates going up.
Right.
They had it for twenty twenty-one, kind of matching up similar to.
Yes, yep. Mm-hmm.
And have you met with department heads, have to start getting some of their budgeting stuff from?
Yep, I'll.
And Public Works?
Yep, we're gonna be, start sitting down. Um, I've already talked to them with the schedule, I've given out the schedule and we're gonna start sitting down next week, so. But I do have general ideas of what will, what will be in their budgets, so, like large items, but.
Yeah, my, my goal is certainly try to keep the tax rate near what it is. Um, I, I still would like to continue to work on transparency and see what we can do for civic engagement to try to, you know, we can only do so much, but we can at least get some avenues out there. And if, then, you know, people choose not to, that, that's them, but that, that still seems to be my, my goals.
Hmm. Um, I mean, just kind of going off what we've been working on, I mean, I, I think a big part is maintenance of our current infrastructure, you know, our roads, our utility infrastructure, and then also our buildings, just kind of, I know that that's reflected in our CIP, but just, I'm making that assumption as well.
A little, and it will help for some of the budgeting and maybe some for twenty twenty-one and maybe some discussions going into twenty twenty-two and beyond, but I'd like to get a good handle on our, when you bring up buildings and the public works building and where are things being stored right now? Is there room in there, I, I mean, are they on a room already? What do we need, I mean, we gotta start planning ahead for some of that stuff.
Mm-hmm.
Staffing, staffing in, in City Hall or, um, and I don't want to get too far off track, but it kind of lines up with budget talk. I mean, and sometimes I, I feel some frustration with projects are taking longer than maybe they should for the community to, is that because we're short sta, we're at that point now where, because of staffing is be, that projects are being delayed and not getting done in a real timely fashion. And by that, I mean, some of them that have, you know, been a year and, and we're not getting much traction on them and those. But I think we gotta get a plan in place even for staffing, which is gonna help with budgeting. But I, I don't, I think with Public Works Building, I, I don't think, it's just my assumption that we've had it now five, six years, are we getting to that point? I want to start knowing when are, when are, when are we gonna be there? Is another ten years, great, let's start plan, you know, we can plan accordingly, but some of those bigger things, I want to get captured.
Oh, forget, we still have that Public Works.
Right, yep, absolutely, yep, yep. And maybe it's being used, but I don't have a good handle where everything, you know, how full are we, right? What capacity are we at? Let's, let's try to get a handle on some of that. I think that goes with staffing too. Any other comments, goals? And I, I think your timeline looks fine. I think we're right on schedule for everything. Um, keep working on, get us involved when we need to and get some work sessions set up if we have to, if we have to schedule some budget meetings, let's get them done and, and we'll go from there.
Okay.
Anything more, does that, does that give you some direction, Maggie?
Yeah.
All right, that'll take us number three, excuse me. I brought this one up, I asked her to put, I asked Maggie to do some looking into it. I started thinking as we're doing a lot of present, presenting now, and I thought maybe it'd be nice to have a camera that could go right under the presenter and, and go right on on the screen, where they could flip back and forth, so the cameras just, doesn't always have to be on us, it can be on the screen, so people can see what we're seeing. Um, I thought it would be a good idea, we could even move the podium, so then people could see who's up at the podium talking. But then when it came in at five thousand dollars, I thought, I, I asked her to bring it here, I want to get up. It seemed a little extensive to me.
When Nikki and I were on that committee, when we discussed all this, um, we did discuss a second camera and we found out from the vendor that we would actually need somebody here to do the work and switch it back and forth. So we would have to have someone here to run the camera, which we don't have.
Need to switch, yes.
So it seemed to me that we could just get a remote to do it, am I wrong by that? I thought it was just a simple remote that we just have to hit a button and it'll flip flop it and then.
Yeah, it would be some sort of, like a remote device that would have to switch. Um.
Cause, and I remember now that you bring that up, I do recall that, but it seemed it was more up there, someone had to be doing, you know, actually doing, but if it's just a remote.
Yeah, and I.
But maybe five thousand.
Yeah, she implied that it was a person.
Oh, yeah, yeah, if that's the case.
They're looking like it, cause they, they do St. Louis Parks, City Council among other ones, and that was a specific question, you know, who is running, you need someone specific.
Some of you guys think it's worthwhile?
Um, I don't.
Okay, okay, then fair enough. I was gonna say, I was gonna have Maggie then check into it again, just to confirm we can actually do it with. But if, if we don't think it's worthwhile, let's not, we'll look at it some other time.
Actually, if it's, I mean, just for my sake and just to educate myself a little bit more, um, uh, I'm going to have Tierney come out anyways, just to reassess a few things, just so that with that CARES Act money, like since we have, if it does, if we have to close again, like just what can we do to maybe increase our ability to do remote stuff?
That's where I think it would be nice to be able, if more people have to be at home again, they can then see the presentation.
Right.
See things. I would like to even eventually get to the point of, even when we're here, that we can somehow let residents zoom in and watch it on Zoom, so they don't have to be at the meeting. You know, we should have that technology now, everyone's using it, everyone's.
Well, and I thought we had a plan with Jaguar.
Yeah, we.
We have our own dedicated channel for that.
Yep, yep, where we can do something, so maybe that, and maybe that's the way to do it.
Yeah, we're currently in the process of, that's like with our IT guy Jimmy, with that whole approval process, we're just getting the contracts with Jaguar figured out.
Good.
And those upgrades are starting.
People to see, and I think it could even help uh, uh, the newspapers and where they can just watch, watch things and then see the present, and see the numbers and then, you know, write, you know, write their articles and.
I know in previous communities I lived in, you could watch it live and then they would always run it again, like on Saturday morning or something.
Maybe we should start looking at the Jaguar again.
Yeah, no, we, yeah, no, we're actually working with them to get, to set up right now. So it's, it's just taken a while to get.
Perfect, okay, and I won't beat this, and if we're not, if we don't think we need to, then I, and I'm good with that. But if it was a thousand dollars, I would have felt much better, I would have not do it, but.
My only thing is, you know, the reason I, I say no is because um, I think if you're watching this like right now, whether they're watching it live or whether they're watching it on, on YouTube, you know, they can pull up the packets and see everything we're seeing. And you're very clear when you say on page eighteen, on page thirty, so.
That's a good point.
Um, you've been very clear with that, so, I mean, people can follow along and.
Yeah, and I can make sure to point out numbers a little bit more too.
Yeah, I'm, I'm perfectly fine with that, all right. With, with that then, we won't beat, beat the dead horse then, and we'll adjourn.